Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to the Lacey Township Meeting on this wonderful evening, and we're glad you are all here. We'll commence with our caucus. I'll read the statement. We'll rise, we will pledge allegiance to the flag, have a moment of silence, and we'll move right into business. I had a quick notice that this meeting was given in accordance with Open Public Meetings Act pursuant to public laws nineteen seventy-five. Said notice was advertised in Asbury Park Press in The Beacon and was posted on the bulletin board showing the time and place of the meeting. Will you lit our flag?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item number one this evening, Resolution twenty-two-five-three-eleven, promoting officer to chief of police.
Resolution of the Township of Lacey, County of Ocean State of New Jersey, promoting Paul J. Sullivan, Jr., provisionally to the position of chief of police pending promotional procedures for the Township of Lacey.
Move it.
Second.
Mrs. Juliana?
Yes.
Mr. Kennis?
Yes.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. LaRae?
Yes.
Mayor Kiratola?
Yes.
At this time, I'd like to call up retiring chief Christopher Kenny. He has no words to say.
There we are again. So, going over three years ago, myself and soon be chief Sullivan, you know, we're here getting sworn in, and time goes by very fast. So, you know, it's an honor to be here. I want to thank, you know, all the officers for coming out today. This is a great show of, you know, support for our department, our leadership, the new leadership come in. This is great. I wanted to thank, you know, all the family, all the friends, the retirees, you know, we've got, you know, Lieutenant Lutillier in the back, Lieutenant Torella's in the back there, you know, Lieutenant Man, you know, so all the, you know, retiree, you know, I'm missing Sergeant Eden, there's so many. So, thank you so much for coming. Jeff Slota, you know, recent retiree, Scott Anderson, so they're all here, you know what I mean? They're here to support, they believe in the department, you know, they still have friendships and love for the department, so that's, that's a testament to, you know, all the men and women of this organization and of this township. I want to thank some dignitaries, we have, you know, Chief Santucci from Berkeley Township.
That's nice.
That's what's nice about this, is we support each other. Captain LaRaca as well, thank you for coming to this event.
I know him.
Appreciate all the support. So, tonight, my retirement's been announced, but tonight's going to be a promotion of a chief and captain to, you know, replace the captain decision. So, I just want to say, after twenty-five years and seven months, you know, as a recent township police officer, I, you know, when we retired effective December first, it's been an honor and a privilege to serve for this organization. I want to thank, you know, the committee truly, Veronica, the committee, all the committee members for putting their faith in me and, you know, supporting the department, and it was a real pleasure. I can truly say that. I really had a great time being chief. It was, it was great. I appreciate the support and everything that, you know, the township committee does for us. And, yeah, I'm not leaving on bad terms, it's just, I'm truly not. It's, you know, when it's your turn, when you're like a SWAT operator in emergency management, anytime you step out, you know, in operation, you should be planning for your, you know, the de-mobilization for your exit, you know, as a strategist. So, three years is my mark, and I've said that to soon be chief Sullivan. And, so, you know, that being said, I followed through on it, and, you know, I don't want to, you know, get in the way of anybody. Very confident, you know, leadership here, all the lieutenants, all the sergeants, the officers, even the brand-new ones, or, you know what I mean? You know, they supervise us every day with the fine work that they do. So, I want to take my opportunity to thank all the officers, you know, all the family members for, you know, giving, giving us, you know, your, you know, your spouses, your kids, you know, your children, and, you know, put it in our hands, our responsibility to make sure that we go home each year and everything. So, you know, I can say that we did prove ourselves, so I don't want to, I don't want to belabor it. Last thing I want to say is, like, you know, I have my family present, thank you so much. As my longtime girlfriend should, eventually will be here. She will be by the fiance.
I'll be here as long as I can.
Woo!
I had to put her on the spot.
But she says no.
And he's, and he's not retiring.
So, without further ado, I've got soon be chief Sullivan from the center. I have this bio written down only because, you have to say what it takes to become a chief. Like, you hear, like, oh, he's a police officer, oh, he's been in a while, it's not how it goes, the amount of, you know, effort, sacrifice that goes into it. So, I don't want to miss anything, so that's why I'm going to read it. So, Sullivan, graduated Lacey Township High School in nineteen ninety-eight. He was bachelor's degree from Seek Hall University, and I know that he was, he took the civil service test and was, you know, debating whether to take the police job or finish college, and he took the police job and still finished college, and then went on and got his master's degree from Fairland, Missouri. Kids, you listening? Dad put college, he put school, education's very important, so continue on, follow your father's footsteps. In two thousand and one, he attended Class Seventy-seven in Ocean County Police Academy, he achieved high overall firearms. All right, he was hired in all, uh, sorry, he was hired in dozens of all his in two thousand and one. Patrol division, that's where he worked until two thousand and thirteen, when he's appointed to acting sergeant, which remained permanent in March of two thousand and fourteen. While in the patrol division, he was a firearms instructor, handgun rifle, and subgun. Those are pass fail courses. You show up on day one, you don't make your qualification, you're scheduled the whole week, you go home. You did it all. SWAT team operated for five years, you know, very important. He was a field training officer, so one of the main minds of all the officers here. He had methods of instruction, so he's an instructor, and he's a PTC, Police Training Commission Certified Instructor. So, he teaches at, you know, at the academy and has all the training and abilities to lead, teach, or, you know, young and all the officers. So, he spent three years as a patrol sergeant before being promoted to lieutenant in two thousand and sixteen, and was assigned to the Administrative Support Services Division. He spent three years in that position before being transferred to the patrol division as a patrol lieutenant. He was promoted to police captain November of two thousand and twenty-two, after finishing seventh in the state on the New Jersey Police Captain Civil Service Exam. Yeah, he was a good one. So, seventh in the state, all while trying to, you know, get our department up and running. So, so it wasn't like he was just studying and, you know, had a position, he was learning the positions, pathing while doing that. All right. He currently oversees all four divisions in our police department, runs the day-to-day operations of the organization, and internal affairs coordinator for the agency, which is professional standards. January of two thousand and twenty-three, he attended the New Jersey Association of the State Chiefs of Police Command and Leadership Academy, it's a fourteen-week school, it's formerly the West Point Command and Leadership Academy. So, you one of the first, or, you know, yeah, so one of the first.
He's going to save credits for this, so.
I'm the first, so it's a demanding, it's a demanding force, there's a lot of sacrifices that shows family, you know, or in a true, a true effort. He doesn't, he doesn't need to be doing this at this time in his life, but, you know, who goes to, chief Sullivan. So, he wants to, of course, knowledge is worth more than nineteen years.
Yay.
His kids, Cooper, Holden, Christian, and he spends every bit of his free time traveling around the region, watching his kids play baseball and soccer. I appreciate it someday, the sound and grace your parents make for you.
Yep.
What I want to say is, hey, I really couldn't have done, I wouldn't have been as successful without, without all the, you know, the kids together. Spent a lot of nights, I'm sure, on the telephone to where you're wondering if he's, you know, like, who are you talking to? It was unknown, you know, the times have changed, we're bringing the department in a different direction, so we've bounced up all the time, you know, constantly. So, what I can say is, you know, I want to thank you for, you know, you know, all your help, you know, guidance, and, and we have a better captain, and I know the department's in good hands. I wouldn't turn it over, I'd hold on to it if I knew, you know, if it wasn't in any good hands, and I know between, you know, these two, you guys, you know, township, the committee, all you officers and citizens of Lacey, you're in good hands, you know, on the best. Welcome.
I, Paul J. Sullivan, Jr.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will faithfully.
That I will faithfully.
Impartially.
Impartially.
And justly.
And justly.
Perform all the duties of chief of police.
Perform all the duties of chief of police.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
And that I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And that I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
And that I will bear true faith and allegiance to this name.
And I will bear true faith and allegiance to this name.
And to the government established in the United States.
And to the government established in the United States.
And in this state.
And in this state.
Under the authority of the people.
Under the authority of the people, so help me God.
Chief Sullivan, before you begin, why don't we move this way a little bit so that Officer Schaefer and stuff can get some pictures?
Everybody's right, trying to get pictures of you guys. You boys in here too, come on, get in.
That was really weird, just saying chief Sullivan.
So fast.
Just stab him with it, just stab him with it.
I'm more nervous about this, right? I take my chances.
Preacher of the halls.
Who's yours?
I appreciate your time being here so first, geez, it's been, it's been a, it's been a great run. We, as, you know, representing the department now, we want to thank you for what you've done for us over the last three years, the leadership you provided, the stability you provided, the, you know, the confidence you provided, the training you provided for these officers and for us. We, you know, it's, it's really been, you know, as you had said, it's really been a pleasure working alongside you for the last few years, and we wish you the best in retirement, and we heard it here tonight. It's about to come, so best of luck to you, and, you know, walk out maybe Friday, three p.m., and I will not let you down moving forward. To the committee.
So, the, the chief was not lying, it has been an incredible experience getting along, you know, getting to work alongside everybody here. It's not always perfect at all times, but it is heading in the right direction, and the relationship that we've had has been professional, it has been good, it has been pleasurable. You know, I'm glad to have gotten to know all of you on a personal level and on top of a, you know, professional level. We look to continue moving the department forward in the future, knowing that maybe everybody, everybody up here, thank you for trusting me to be able to lead, you know, this organization, and looking forward to a lot of good things over the next few years, and as we continue to develop everybody to take over the organization when we put out faster. So, thank you very much.
Thank you. So, no, if people are taking bets, I'm like, I'm going to some crimes. So, it's, yeah, incredibly humbling experience to be out there, it truly is, and, you know, there's a lot of, you know, community Thanksgiving, family in town, everybody's here, so looking forward to, to, you know, tonight. The, the officers in this room, and the retired officers that are in this room, and the, you know, our dispatchers that are, you know, supports and that, it really, it's an absolute pleasure being able to work alongside you guys for as long as we've been able to do this, right? You know, I have a list of things that a lot of people really talk about, but the, to, you know, nobody really truly understands what a Lacey Township police officer is and the sacrifices that a recent Lacey Township police officer makes in their careers, in their lives, the sacrifices that families go through, right? You guys are all sitting here shaking your heads because you know really what I'm talking about, right? Unless you're actually wearing this badge, wearing this uniform, you really truly don't get. So, tonight, I'm going to, you know, I'm going to give it a platform, I'm going to tape the platform, so, but I kind of, you know, highlight some of the things that these officers do on a daily basis that make my life and my job easy to come in every, every single day. So, you know, I've been able to see the sacrifices that, that they make, the Christmases that they've missed, the, you know, Halloweens that they've missed. There's going to be people that are going to be missing things from dinner on Thursday. There's going to be people that aren't going to be able to wake up with their kids on Christmas morning, right? So, you go through that, that stuff, and you start, you know, you really, really appreciate what they do every single day. So, go back to April twenty-second of this year, when, uh, it was my nineteenth wedding anniversary, I got called out for Joan Brodwater. She was not happy. So, you know, I kept getting those phone calls, and then Horizon and all the, all the, all cell phones, they stopped working so that she couldn't get in touch with me. So, and then as this thing progressed, so I sat here and thought about my sacrifices that night, and I then, like, yeah, I'm, you know, I can't go to dinner with the smoke shell of a wife that I have right there, but I look at all these officers, and the first thing that they did was they all came to work without pressure, they left their own families. There were many people in here that, that houses literally were in the line of fire, right? Backed up to the, backed up into the ponds, they came in, they sacrificed their own families and our own homes to make sure that the residents of this town are safe. It's duty over service, right? You know, service over, you know, so, you know, service over self, that's really where we're at, right? So, how does this all tie into what we're talking about? It's going to be a theme of my conversation tonight. I want to explain to these guys, and you continue to surround yourself with amazing people every single day, and amazing things are going to happen to you guys, right? So, sorry to keep, I'm a little choked up. So, you know, I do, I do have to, to go, you know, I've had the pleasure, there's been a hundred and thirty-five police officers in Lacey Township history, right? I've had the pleasure of working with ninety-six of them over my time here. My dad being a police officer, proud of that, I've known pretty much almost every single police officer that's ever gone through this, and every single person would do the same sacrifices that you guys did. They would live the life that you guys did, so it's very easy for me to stand up here and you guys are doing your jobs, putting service over self. Can you count on us? So, it's, it's very easy for us to do our jobs when you guys have the head of the world, right? So, you know, I assure you, you know, I, I hold you guys to a high standard, and we will continue to hold you guys to a high standard. On the, on the converse, I expect you to hold me to that standard, you know, our command staff to a high standard, right? That's, that's how we're going to continue to progress this organization. For the office, you know, the, the retired officers that are here and the officers that have passed through the hall, I owe it to you guys to continue representing you, representing the current officers in a professional manner, in, you know, to the highest of my ability. I'll continue to do that with integrity, and I'll continue to lead this organization like he's the leader. So, you continue to hold me to that standard, I'll continue to hold you to that standard, right? To the residents of, of Lacey Township, we have an amazing organization here, you just heard me talk about it for a few minutes, exactly what, what we have here, it's very unique in terms of, of police organizations. Lacey Township Police Department is an amazing place. These officers will work tirelessly to ensure that the residents are safe, the residents are happy, that they will continue to provide the ultimate service that they're, that they're expected from our organization. We will continue to undermine leadership, undermine the leadership, soon be captain of the South leadership. We will, we will ensure that we're going to continue to provide the residents of Lacey Township that's, so. In terms of my family and friends, sorry, it's icy, so, so, you know, the, since I, we talked about the theme of, you know, you're, you're the, you're the sum of the five people, you're the average of five people who spend your most time, right? I spend my most time, in the last twenty-five years, with a hundred and thirty-five of the greatest people that walk the earth. So, it's easy to be in my spot right now, right? Continue to surround yourself with people like this, and you think you're going to think that happens, right? I look at my friends over there, that have traveled from afar, Connecticut, Pennsylvania, New York, you know, you know, these guys are, every person that's in here that is on the scale now, they, they're, so they're, professionally, they're outstanding people, they're certainly very impressive, right? We've got military, we've got business owners, we have principals, we've got corporate NRT guy, I don't care. Love you, Dan. Love you, Dan. Right? So, you know, you have to share all this, and that, right? So, you know, just, again, continue to surround yourself with these, with these people is my message for you guys, right? When we talk about the sacrifices, you know, my, my, my own three right here, three men, they've sacrificed along with everybody else, too, right? They've, they've, they've been on the receiving end of midnight phone calls, they've been on the receiving end of, you know, where I should be paying attention to them in the car, when I go games, you know, they, they know every officer's badge number, you know, every officer's phone, you know, phone number, they know every officer's name, and they, when it comes down to it, if you guys really want to know who calls the most, these guys will answer that.
We won't tell any secrets.
They will, so, they even, you know, they even know when the mayor calls. So, so it's, you guys have sacrificed all of those phone calls, those midnight phone calls from the township, et cetera, et cetera, in about ten minutes, when I swear that young man in over there, it'll all be his problem. He could fill it out, and, you know, like, so, the biggest supporter of me, it's been, it's been amazing. She, she has taught me so much, she's the smartest person I know. The smartest person I know, she's taught me so much about compassion and, and love and forgiveness, and, you know, I'm undeserving of this level of, of support that I've had from her, you know, this entire time. This, without you guys, this is not possible for me to be here. So, thank you. I promise that it won't be too much longer, I'll be here maybe a couple more years, and, you know, and then we'll pass the time, but at this point, it's going to be, you know, all the, all the issues that we've had over the last few years, work-wise, we're going to hand off right here to the, to the captain, okay? Yeah, I'm so sorry. But, no, just here for, yeah, for the bottom line, you know, there's lots of medical, for a lot of practice to have for everybody in here, I know, kind of rambling on a little bit, but I'm, I got a platform I'm taking, and, you know, thank you for being part of me, really. So, you know, it's been a long, long road, and lots, and you're not going to get through, my message for you three young men, you're not going to get through that without this, this level of support, this level of love, this level of affection. And I'd be pleased if you could have, help yourself, put in there, everything you can do.
And women.
And women.
Oh! Just started.
You know where the word cut off. So, again, thank you, and I think we are ready to move on to.
Would you like to ask the committee if they have comments?
Comments at the end, now?
Do comments at the end or now?
Well, I mean, after the others were.
After the captain.
Fine, we're good.
Okay, we'll move on to the next resolution.
We will move on. Resolution number two, number twenty-two-five-three-twelve, promoting officer to police captain.
Resolution of the Township of Lacey, County of Ocean State of New Jersey, promoting Samuel C. Delasalle III to the position of captain pending promotional procedures for the Township of Lacey.
Move it.
So I can take it.
Mrs. Juliana?
Yes.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Kennis?
Yes.
Mr. LaRae?
Yes.
Mayor Kiratola?
Yes.
The floor is yours, sir.
Back, this one's going to be easier. So, yes, another good, good moment for, for the organization, I'm really proud to be able to present to everybody Lieutenant Soon Be Captain Delasalle, I have his bio here. He's a good man, Sam is a very good man, he's, 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 he's good to bounce things off of, good to, good to speak with, good to talk to, he's an excellent employee. Well, he's been one of the other recent civil service tests for the police captain, it's a no-brainer, it's going to go right, you know, and Sam, I'm proud to have you along, with the longest hand for the journey, along, along for the ride, to open your eyes up to some of the, the, the things that are, that really go on behind the scenes, we're going to peel back a little bit, and, yeah, so, without further ado, I'm going to read Captain Delasalle's bio for everybody, and I don't want to miss anything right now, here. So, Captain Delasalle, Captain Delasalle grew up in Lacey Township, graduated from the Lacey Township High School in the year two thousand. He then enlisted in the United States Marine Corps, where he served four years of active duty in the infantry and security forces, achieving the rank of sergeant. For his time in service, he was awarded numerous medals, rewards, and certificates of commendation, including the New Jersey Distinguished Service Medal, which is New Jersey's highest military award. After returning from the military service, he worked for the Federal Bureau of Prisons, completing training at the Federal Law Enforcement Training Center in Lincoln, Georgia. In two thousand and five, Captain Delasalle began his career with the Lacey Township Police Department. Soon after, he became a member of Ocean County Regional SWAT Team, where he served for nine years. He will tell us all about it. He served longer than anybody. In two thousand and thirteen, he was assigned as a detective, where he found a passion for investigations, working jointly with agencies, including the Ocean County Prosecutor's Office, New Jersey State Police, Federal Bureau of Investigations, and Bureau of Alcohol and Firearms. In two thousand and seventeen, he was assigned to the Ocean County Prosecutor's Office for Narcotics Strike Force, where his efforts were focused on drug distribution. Upon his returning, he was assigned to the Lacey Township Drug Enforcement Unit, Special Enforcement. Over the years, Captain Delasalle has proven an extensive training resume within firearms, tactical response, and investigations, which include firearms instructor, ammunition instructor, active shooter instructor, palace instructor, methods of instruction, top gun training, undercover narcotics assessment, data training, Delta Narcotics Unit Command course, internal affairs investigations. So, all of that stuff that leads into these things, again, it's good to read everybody's resumes, you really need to know exactly who, who's, what it takes to get into these positions. As a supervisor, his duties and responsibilities have included investigating, investigating the unit commander, the drug enforcement unit, patrol supervisor, active shooter supervisor, internal affairs coordinator, property and evidence supervisor, animal. animal duty investigation supervisor, and assistant firearms trainer. Captain Del Sow has graduated from the New Jersey State Association of Chiefs of Police Command and Leadership Academy and has completed the FBI Law Enforcement Executive Development Association Executive Leadership Program. He has a bachelor's degree in fare and nickels. He continues to pursue a master's degree and should be completed soon. Captain Del Sow will be serving as the captain of operations of the Lacy Township Police Department and will be assigned to oversee professional standards as well as the deputy personnel mandatory for their release. Captain Del Sow has married his beautiful wife, Jen, Jennifer, where the, they recently celebrated their 24th wedding anniversary. They have two children, who attends the college, uh, college of New Jersey, and Caitlin is currently a college of the college.
That'd be nice.
Captain Del Sow, the floor is yours, my friend. I say, Neil C. Del Sow III.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will faithfully.
That I will faithfully.
Impartially.
Impartially.
And justly.
And justly.
Will perform all the duties of police captain.
Will perform all the duties of police captain.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
And that I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the state of New Jersey.
And the Constitution of the state of New Jersey.
And that I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same.
And to the government established in the United States.
And to the government established in the United States.
And in this state.
And in this state.
Under the authority of the people so help me God.
Under the authority of the people so help me God. Thank you. You wanna come up there? Put the door up. No.
So, you.
I'll take an opportunity.
So, I'm trying to keep it short and clear.
The, uh, first of all, thank you to the township committee, thank you to the township, thank you to the police department, mayor, administrator, clerk, thank you to everybody, all the committeemen, the support for the police department, and myself, and trust them. And, you know, I couldn't be happier. I'm having a great time right now. So with that being said, you know, I can't take credit for, for everything. This is, this is a huge people, it's a big time, and also, you know, the support of being around me, all the things, trust me, I learn from everybody, so, first and foremost, my family, my boy, my kids. I did the best I could. So, the chief talks about some sacrifices and stuff, and, you know, I apologize if you're upset like that. I got a big heart, but I got a couple of talents, you know, I put these sort of guys here and we all keep up with the town. And, uh, sometimes you guys dip a short in the neck and I apologize. It's because I take the, the hope that's upstairs, and I kind of, you know, thank you. Thank you to my mother, my sister. My mother's, my wife's the same. My sister, like my second mother and my father. My nephew, my friends, all my friends, and our family, you can't forget that. But some people, just, just do the two best that they can, unfortunately, they're all with us, but they're still here and they do each other's much, and they support each other, so I wanted to get them. There's a big mentor in the room. He's in there high, and he's talking about stand-up, but Chris Corinna, he's a big mentor for me. Not this, not this word, but like, you learn a little book, it's a book, I guess. My in-laws have always supported me, they've always been there for us, and I feel like I'm gonna forget them, so I'll, I don't wanna take up too much of my time. The chief said a lot that I was gonna say, so I guess I won't be saying. But other than that, I do have to thank every officer, all the retired officers, all the officers I've worked with in the past, all my previous supervisors, leaders, and the people that were with me alongside me, below me. I've learned something from everyone here, including some of our newest officers, so I am so excited and grateful for this position and opportunity. I'm gonna give you everything I got, like I always have, and that's, that's, that's the promise I can make, is I'm gonna give you everything I have, and I hope it's enough. I hope, I hope I meet the expectations. Thank you, thank you, everybody.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Pete.
First, I just wanna congratulate Chris on his retirement, and I just wanna thank him for all the years of service that he's done here. He's set a great example for the township and for all you officers. His demeanor was perfect for the, for, for our squad here, and I'm truly gonna miss you. And I was thinking, PJ, congratulations, Sam, congratulations, but I was thinking, PJ, I think that's the last officer that I, I think, it's the last officer that I vaguely knew of while I went through the school system here. And it dawned on me that I've become irrelevant now. So I just wanna wish you both, you know, many years of success, and we're happy to have you, and you have, you've both had long histories in Lacy Township, that's especially valuable to us, so thank you both and best of luck.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor, Mr. McDonald. First, I wanna thank Chief Kenny. You said in your, in your words, a different direction, and it couldn't have been more true. We had to go in a different direction. You were the right man at the right time, and you did an outstanding job, and I thank you. PJ, you've got some big shoes to fill, man, and I hope, 'cause three years ago, we started this. We, they both were interviewing, and we said, go with Chief Kenny, and then PJ will follow suit, and we have stuck to that, and it has worked tremendously. And PJ has done a fantastic job, and he's ready to be the chief of Lacy Township, and I'm sure he's gonna do a wonderful, wonderful job, but he's got big shoes to fill because Chief Kenny was unbelievably good. And I think you've, you've got no problem, I think you got this. Sam, now, Sam's a little different story.
Okay, what's that mean?
I caught Sam, I moved in to my house on the map now, and Sam was a freshman in high school. Okay, so I, and I would just moved in, I was a commissioned salesman, so I was out early and home late. And one day, I'm working at home, 'cause I gotta be on a conference call, and these two men knock on my door, suits and, I go, can we come in and talk to you for a second? And I'm going like, about who? They said, Sam. I go, who's he? Sure, come on in. So I'm gonna help the young man out. Is he good, is he desert? I'm like, yeah. I had never, I had never met Sam. I'm baking him out to be the king. And he didn't fail me. He is an outstanding officer, he's gonna make a great captain. And my, my oldest son is very thankful for him, because at one time, he, my oldest son had just gotten his driver's license, and Sam slipped him a PBA card. And my oldest son likes to tell stories, and he comes home one night, and he said, I had to use the PBA card tonight, Dad. And I said, I don't wanna know. I don't wanna know. You're old enough to drive, keep these things to yourself unless it's really bad. He goes, nah, I was only doing 75 on a 35. I said, well, you're paying the fine, 'cause I'm not. So, but, we have a good police department here, and we, we have been commended by other countymen about how we planned this, and I am telling you right now, it's another township, it's a major fight. We're not having that. We've got a plan, a smooth transition is so important to the police department. So you guys know what's going on, they know what's going on, and we can just keep going. So I wanna wish all three of you, Kenny, Chief Kenny, Chief Sullivan, Captain Sam, you're gonna, you're always gonna be Captain Sam to me. So, I don't wanna wish you...
What's that?
I, I need a PBA card. I wanna wish you guys nothing but the best, you're leading one of the best police forces in the state of New Jersey by far, and I wanna thank you for your service. I wanna thank the families for their sacrifices. It's not easy. It's not easy. So I wanna thank everybody, and that's all I have, Mayor.
Thank you, Committee Man McDonald. Committeewoman Juliana.
Thank you, Mayor. First, I would just like to say to Chris, you are gonna be missed, because you have that personality that just smoothed us along, you know, and we were very fortunate to have you here. And I know it's rubbed off on PJ. I've known PJ for quite a few years, and I know you've, you've, you know, it really has rubbed off on him, and he's gonna do a great job, right, follow suit right with you. And we'll be on his butt a couple times, I'm sure, along the way, you know? But, um, we're very proud, very proud of you guys, and I'm wishing you the best on your retirement, enjoy every moment of it. I think she has to answer the question, though, I'm just saying, okay? Um, just, just putting it out there like that, that's all I'm saying. To, to my, to my new chief, we're very excited for you. The family history is just, it's a wonderful thing, and I'm sure you'll make them very proud, and we're welcoming you aboard. It's great to have you as the chief. And to Sam, who's always very quiet, doesn't say much, I run into him here or there, and but, that piece of paper that PJ read from, you have quite the long length of stuff that you've accomplished in your life, and you should be very proud of yourself, you really should be, and we're grateful to have you. Welcome aboard, thank you. And to all our officers out there and all our retirees, we're always grateful for all of you, and we're thankful that you're all here supporting your team, because we couldn't do it with all, without all of you, so, thank you. That's all.
Fantastic, thank you for the comments. Committeeman LaRae.
Like I always say, there's advantage of going close to last before the mayor. Mostly, everything's been said. But looking around this room, you're gonna find one thing in common besides the excellent police force we got and the whole bit, but all our promotions tonight are all Lacy-grown people. They grew up in Lacy, they attended our school system, along with many of these, uh, young men and women around the room. So when people start questioning the caliber of different things around our town, remember, this is what we produce, and we should be damn proud of it.
That's right.
Chief Kenny, there's not much to say, except, you know, it's been an honor to have you serve this town as an officer, more of an honor to have you the last three years as a chief. You just did a tremendous job, you and PJ, commanding this department, bringing it into a new direction. And from what I'm told, 'cause this is my first year up here, this is probably in decades the most workable situation between the police department and the town government. They have been a real pleasure and an honor to work with. PJ, a few months ago, I remember sitting up here and we were, uh, a couple, I think we were bringing in a new officer, and one thing was brought, there's a few officers out of that 135 that have the honor of being legacy officers, and PJ's one of them. His dad served this town for many, many years, and the other thing I've also realized up here is, as you grow up in town yourself, of course, I'm a tad older than all of them, that some of these people have real names. I never knew for the longest time that PJ was Paul. I never thought of him. So it's different things you gotta adjust to. I mean, I never knew her name was Veronica, I thought it was always sis. You know, it's adjustments, you gotta make through life. But PJ, you've always done the town and your family proud. We've, we've seen how you've been serving through the years, your list of accomplishments. Your family, I'm sure, could not be prouder of you. I know this committee and people in this room, it's a real honor to see some of the retirees out there, because I'll tell you, the biggest thing anymore is we see officers and we're like, who are they? If you didn't have your uniform on, because you're all young now, we're used to all the retirees. And I know there's some that's even come up to me and asked me, are you one of my daughter's dad? And I go, who are you? Realized, you know, these guys grew up too. You know, they're not two and a half, three foot tall anymore. Sam, I don't really know you, I know of you, and I've heard nothing but good things. One thing I wanna thank you for is your military service. We would not be in this room being able to do these kind of things if it wasn't for the men and women that come out and serve our country to give us this opportunity, and for anybody in this room that's served in the military, thank you. And not, I don't wanna get repetitive, but I think the most unique thing tonight, besides these excellent, excellent promotions that we're very proud of, Chris, it's a possibility. I think you blew the whole place away with that. And if you're embarrassed, you deserve to be. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. LaRae, wonderful comments. Everyone had wonderful comments tonight, but I'm gonna bring everybody back to three years ago, when we were doing interviews for the now Chief Kenny job. So we interviewed Chief Kenny, and we interviewed Chief Sullivan individually, so I want everyone here to know what happened during those nights. It was a long, long interview process, and they were alone, they were sitting right in front of here, right in front of these, these front where their families were, and we would talk to them, and I remember distinctly, because I've been on Earth 57 years, and I've never seen something like this before, when we asked each about the other, and these guys were in competition with each other to get a position, when we asked each about the other, they couldn't have talked in more glowing terms. We even asked them to repeat sometimes, and I, and that's when it hit me, these guys are tight, they're pretty tight in this room. So, that happened, and none of you were here, only the governing body was here, but that happened, and it happened at each juncture with each question, how would you handle it, what do you think of what he does? And that happened. So you have some fine gentlemen up here, that's the truth, and the governing body knows it, because we were up here during that process. So I wanna thank both of you guys for that. In the past, we talked on the phone many, many times to both Chief Kenny and Chief Sullivan, but in the past few months in particular, educated me on, you know, what happens to police after, you know, when they go home, what happens to police after retirement. Some of the things that you think you should all know, but you don't unless you hear it. So, I wanna thank PJ and Chris personally for telling me that stuff, because it gets you to look at things in a different way. That's from the heart, and that's the truth. So I'm looking forward to supporting the blue like I have, like we all have. Sam, like Committeeman LaRae, I haven't had opportunity to speak with much, but if we all remember before COVID, the elephant in the room in all of our towns for public safety and public health was the opioids, the overdoses, everything that would happen, the street crime. And when he's sitting there in the drug unit, working on stuff, and then people come, I get a coffee, wow, what's going on, what's going on? I don't know what's going on, because I'm not supposed to know what's going on. So the Chief Kenny will tell you, you're a very different kind of department head. I'll tell you what I think, you do what you think you should do, 'cause you're a chief... I'll tell you what I think, you do what you think you should do because you're a chief of police. And I'm going to say that, and I've said that already to Chief Sullivan. So I want people to know, there's things going on with the prosecutor's office or investigations, that these guys are keeping us safe, especially in the drug unit. With dangerous characters in Route 9 and people from out of state, these guys and these ladies are keeping us safe doing that stuff. A lot of it we'll never know about. On purpose, I don't want to know about it, especially if it's an ongoing investigation with the prosecutor's office, somebody without documentation, a federal case. That could happen anytime some, one of these people in here in blue pulls somebody over. So Sam, for all of your FBI information, the things you've done, your military stuff, stuff you worked on, I've got a daughter in this town, I've got skin in this game. I appreciate it. So I'm just, I'm grateful to all of you tonight, and I appreciate it. I want to remind outgoing Chief Kenny, as mayor, I am able to conduct weddings. If you want to do something, we can figure it out. Bayfront Park is nice. I've done a few down there at the gazebo. I feel bad. I don't like doing that to people. That's all I've got, folks. At this time, we would recess this fine gathering of people. I know you may want to be involved in deep discussions about township committee business, but please go out, have a good time. You're welcome to stay, but please take the opportunity, exit. And I want to thank you, heartfelt thank on behalf of everyone up here, both elected and unelected, heartfelt thanks. Thank you.
Pausing the tape.
Good.
Resumed, yes, back on.
I'm number five, storage pod extension request, 1902 Whitcomb Road.
The resident at 1902 Whitcomb Road...
Yes. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, sir.
The resident at 1902 Whitcomb Road is seeking a 30-day extension for the two storage containers that are on their property. 30-day extension would bring them to December 26th. They're just not complete with the projects going on in the home.
We extended them before?
We have not extended this property before.
No.
They get, I believe, they get an initial 30 days, and then the zoning officer is allowed to approve for two additional 30 days. So we're going on 120 days if we approve it for 30 days.
Okay. I have no problem. I mean, December 26th? That's a problem.
I'd like to say like January 15th or something like that.
Yeah. Get it past the holidays.
Do a 45-day extension.
I'm okay with getting it past the holidays.
Are you okay with a 45-day extension?
Yeah. I'll make a motion on that, 45-day extension.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye. I'm number six, special use permit, Pis on 9 South pop-up event, December 6, 2025.
Pis on 9 is looking to do another pop-up event in their parking lot on Saturday, December 6, from 11 to 2. They plan to have eight vendors there, and for those that are food vendors, they have already applied for their board of health permits separately.
Second.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Kenneth?
Yes.
Mr. LaRae?
Yes.
Mrs. Juliana?
Yes.
Mayor Kurtola?
Yes.
Is that all I have? Motion, Speaker?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Township of Lacey Township Meeting, November 25, 2025. Adequate notice to this meeting has been given in accordance with the Open Public Meetings Act pursuant to public laws of 1975. Said notice was advertised in the Asbury Park Press and the Beacon, and was posted on the bulletin board showing the time and place of the meeting. We'll forward to item number one. First reading, ordinance number 2025-017, amending an ordinance affixing and determining salaries, salaries, wages, and compensation for the dispatchers' union.
Ordinance of the Township of Lacey County of Ocean State of New Jersey, amending an ordinance entitled An Ordinance of the Township of Lacey County of Ocean State of New Jersey, affixing and determining the salaries, wages, and compensation of the officers, employees, and members of the governing body of the township. Like you said earlier, this is specific to the dispatcher's union.
Second.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Kenneth?
Yes.
Mrs. Juliana?
Yes.
Mr. LaRae?
Yes.
Mayor Kurtola?
Yes. I'm number two, resolution 2025-313, authorizing the execution of a collective negotiation contract with the GWU Dispatchers Union.
Resolution of the Township of Lacey County of Ocean State of New Jersey, ratifying the terms of grant agreement and authorizing the execution of a collective negotiation contract with the GWU.
Second.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Kenneth?
Yes.
Mrs. Juliana?
Yes.
Mr. LaRae?
Yes.
Mayor Kurtola?
Yes. I'm number three, resolution 2025-314, appointing an emergency management coordinator.
Resolution of the Township of Lacey County of Ocean State of New Jersey, appointing Paul J. Sullivan Jr. as emergency management coordinator for the Township of Lacey.
Second.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. LaRae?
Yes.
Mr. Kenneth?
Yes.
Mrs. Juliana?
Yes.
Mayor Kurtola?
Yes. I'm number four, resolution 2025-315, appointing a deputy emergency management coordinator.
Resolution of the Township of Lacey County of Ocean State of New Jersey, appointing Samuel Delasala as deputy emergency management coordinator for the Township of Lacey.
Second.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Kenneth?
Yes.
Mrs. Juliana?
Yes.
Mr. LaRae?
Yes.
Mayor Kurtola?
Yes. I'm number five, resolution 2025-316, authorizing a leave of absence.
Resolution of the Township of Lacey County of Ocean State of New Jersey, authorizing a leave of absence for Deborah Simpson.
Second.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Kenneth?
Yes.
Mrs. Juliana?
Yes.
Mr. LaRae?
Yes.
Mayor Kurtola?
Yes. I'm number six, resolution 2025-317, authorizing an inter-local services agreement with the county sheriff's department, child restraint program grant. Move it. No, I'm sorry, I always do that.
Resolution of the Township of Lacey County of Ocean State of New Jersey, authorizing the execution of an inter-local service agreement with the County of Ocean for the child restraint program.
Second.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Kenneth?
Yes.
Mrs. Juliana?
Yes.
Mr. LaRae?
Yes.
Mayor Kurtola?
Number seven, resolution 2025-318, authorizing the execution of a Schedule C agreement with the County of Ocean.
Resolution of the Township of Lacey County of Ocean State of New Jersey, authorizing the execution of a Schedule C agreement with the County of Ocean.
Move it.
Second.
Mr. LaRae?
Yes.
Mr. Kenneth?
Yes.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mrs. Juliana?
Yes.
Mayor Kurtola?
Yes. I'm number eight, resolution 2025-319, awarding a contract for the purchase of natural gas.
Resolution of the Township of Lacey County of Ocean State of New Jersey, awarding a contract for the purchase of natural gas to UGI Energy Services LLC.
Second.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Kenneth?
Yes.
Mrs. Juliana?
Yes.
Mr. LaRae?
Yes.
Mayor Kurtola?
Yes. I'm number nine, resolution 2025-320, authorizing the refund of a maintenance guarantee.
Resolution of the Township of Lacey County of Ocean State of New Jersey, authorizing the refund of a maintenance guarantee for a road opening permit.
Move it.
Mrs. Juliana?
Yes.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Kenneth?
Yes.
Mr. LaRae?
Yes.
Mayor Kurtola?
Yes. I'm number 10, resolution 2025-321, authorizing the refund of deposit monies, two refunds in there.
Resolution of the Township of Lacey County of Ocean State of New Jersey, authorizing the refund of deposits held for the use of municipal facilities.
Move it.
Mr. LaRae?
Yes.
Mr. Kenneth?
Yes.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mrs. Juliana?
Yes.
Mayor Kurtola?
Yes. I'm number 11, resolution 2025-322, authorizing the payment of township bills.
Resolution of the Township of Lacey County of Ocean State of New Jersey, authorizing the payment of township bills. This is in the amount of $1,353,326.57.
Second.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Kenneth?
Yes.
Mrs. Juliana?
Yes.
Mr. LaRae?
Yes.
Mayor Kurtola?
Yes. I'm number 12, motion to approve caucus meeting minutes from November 13, 2025.
Move it. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
I'm number 13, motion to approve township meeting minutes from November 13, 2025.
Move it. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
I'm number 14, motion to approve executive session meeting minutes from November 13, 2025.
Move it. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Comments from the public this evening?
Sorry, comments from the committee first?
It should be.
Change it up a little bit.
Change it up. Comments from the committee. Deputy Mayor Kenneth.
Thank you, Mayor. You know, I was going to talk about the OCUA, but I think I'm going to just wish everybody a happy Thanksgiving. Those are my comments.
Wow, fantastic.
You stole my line. I had some things planned, but we don't have enough people here, unfortunately. And so I would just like to wish, just remember that we've got servicemen throughout this world standing guard. So Thanksgiving, say a little prayer for that, and I wish everybody a happy Thanksgiving.
Thank you so much. Committeewoman Juliana.
I'm going on board with the same thing. Happy Thanksgiving. Good to see everybody out tonight that was here with the families, and God bless them all.
Wonderful comments. Committeeman LaRae.
That means I can't say no more than that, right?
You're on a 10 second.
Happy Thanksgiving, everybody.
I'm going to close with a 12-minute prepared...
No, you're not. No, you're not. We'll arrive at...
Happy Thanksgiving, and I wish and hope that God walks with all our police officers, wishing all of them the very, very best. And thank you so much.
And just to remind everybody, we have our annual Christmas parade on December 7.
Number seven.
It begins at 3 o'clock at the Methodist Church and proceeds west here to the building for the tree lighting ceremony that evening. And we have also, I believe, pancakes. Pancakes with Santa that morning at Lynn Oak Harbor Fire.
A White House. Yep.
Open the floor to public comment. Get a move.
It's on wheels, so roll right over.
Thank you, Tom. Appreciate you.
This is a slight continuation of something I said at the last meeting, November 13. Someone pointed out to me, I meant, you'll get yours from God, not me. And please don't any of you ever cut me off like that again. More appropriate would have been to be slightly polite and say, could you come back after everyone else speaks? But I see on tonight's agenda, we're not going to do that anymore. Not say to a member of the public, do we have to listen to this? I would have kindly waited, but you came at me, just like Will Zalinski did to Richard, October 16 at the school board meeting. This town has a real problem with First Amendment rights. When people say things, the power is defeated, I want to hear. As an alternative to what I said at the last meeting, contemplate this. I was actually considering a letter to all Lacey residents with a copy of Ms. Juliano's handwritten statement, but reading it here was way cheaper. A mailing to 12,000 people would have cost a lot. And the meeting, the meeting comment here is free. Someone called me after seeing that meeting on YouTube, and the person asked me, were you saying Peggy committed perjury? And I had to say yes, but my lawyer said it would be a difficult case, and I didn't want the school district to pay for it. After six years, I could no longer hold in what had happened to me. Veronica, I did check with the Board of Elections. They had no complaints from Lacey about me as sheriff candidate visiting the polls. So you weren't exactly telling the truth. Yes, people can complain to you on election day, but unless they put it in writing to their employer, the Board of Elections or the county clerk, it was an invalid attempt on your part to discredit me at the last meeting. You also should not be commenting to or at the public since you are not a committee person. It's true, I politely handed Mrs. Louise Quist a note in front of a room full of people that said almost the exact same thing as I told Peggy here in person, and I'm sure she might have shown it to you. And as far as I'm concerned, you are all still puppets for the Lacey machine because there's no balance of power here in Lacey. It's all tilted to one side. I do miss Mr. John Adams. Now I'm done.
Thank you for your comments this evening. Other comments from the floor?
I mean, nothing but this, I'm just kind of like...
You have to come up to the microphone.
First of all...
Just state your name, please.
Yes, my name is Andrew Napoleon. I live in Lynn Oak Harbor. I've been here since 30 years now, and I just want to say, I love Lacey Township. Thank God for Lacey Township. I moved in, I left a bad situation, I moved to Lacey Township. My kids were newborn to seven, okay? And thank God also for the Lacey Township Police who came to my rescue at one time when I first moved to Lacey and arrested the father of my kids. He got four years in jail. So to be honest here, I have a history here, but goodness to say that my daughter became a doctor, okay? My two sons, and they all were raised here in Lacey from, like I said, birth to seven years old. My daughter's a doctor, my two sons became engineers, and my youngest is a behavioral therapist for the younger generation, working on her master's degree. At 49 years old, all the kids, you know, they left the nest and went to college and everything. At 49 years old, my mom was diagnosed with dementia. I was 49, okay? She was in her 70s. My mom has been living in Lacey Township for the last decade now with me. Actually, I have somebody watching her now while I come to this meeting. I did write a book. I know you guys are all familiar with this book. It's called Grandma Has Dementia, and it's our true life story with all my kids in it, my mom, a situation that we've experienced. And I just want you to know, I raise money and awareness for this topic because I'm 62 now, okay? There's people my age that are now taking care of their loved ones with dementia. And I do, I raise money for breast cancer and wounded warrior and the veterans and things of that sort. But I really don't see anybody around here making awareness and raising money for this very, very big cause that we all have to deal with. It's one thing to like literally be sick, and then it's another thing to lose your mind, okay? And if you lose your mind, who's going to take care of you? Thank God. I used to always say, you know, thank God I have my mom. Thank God I have my mom. And people used to say to me, thank God your mom has you. And then I just realized it recently, thank God she does really have me because who's going to take care of you in this situation? So we need to make the township more aware of this subject, and we have to come up with a cause. I see, listen, there are medicines out there. I'm going to tell you, take your parent off the medicines because it just makes them worse. I promise you, it does. I've told this to many people, they got their parent back for at least two more years if they took, after they took their parent off of all the medicines that they say that are, they're testing. all the medicines that they say that are, they're testing, take them off, doesn't work. I've been taking care of my mother since I was forty-nine, sixty-two, I'm telling you. Um, I have a lot of tidbits, a lot of information to give out, I feel, um, so Murray Grove, everybody knows where Murray Grove is. At the end of this month, um, actually it's Sunday at nine o'clock in the morning, I need my township, all the people in Lacey that their, their parent is exposed to this, to dementia and Alzheimer's, like, to come to this meeting. All the money goes to the women's Alzheimer movement, and it would be nice, I'm going to try to get somebody big, like, I'm really hoping to get like Bruce Springsteen here. Um, his mom passed away from dementia, Alzheimer's, somebody really, really big, like, we need to like make this happen in Lacey, like, I'm going to all these events, and I'm talking to all different people, men, women, and there's a lot of people that their parents have Alzheimer's, Lewy Body, we have, you know, Bruce Willis with Lewy Body, we have, um, you know, um, you know, Bruce's, Bruce Springsteen's mom, we have all different people I can name, Jay Leno's wife, he's now his, the wife's caregiver. And the list goes on and on, and, uh, we are working better now with the cause, and let me just tell you what they're finding, because I study this subject all day. Ever since I'm ten years old, I've been taking care of my mom with, my grandmother with dementia. And when I moved to Lacey thirty years ago, I've taken care of many, many people in this town, their ma- their mom, who, their teachers in this town. We got Peggy Rand, we have Maria Thompson, I mean, I could go list on and on, because it was word of mouth. I, I've been, on my hairdresser, I took care of their parent as if they were my parent. So I have so much knowledge, so much passion for this subject, it was like God put this, you know, prepared me to take care of my mom, so. I'm, I'm actually kind of like begging.
Can you give us the date and where it's going to be again?
Yes, it's Murray Grove, um, it's this Sunday at nine o'clock in the morning, actually Al from Jersey Shore Car Show is also going to be there. He's helping out with this, with this event. To be honest, if we don't have that much time, it's March, March eighth is the event at the Captain's Inn. I don't know, um, you came last year, it was a wonderful event, um, and hopefully this will be a much even bigger event, raise more money and more awareness.
Right, Mr. Napoleon, if I can, so, uh, if I can, so I didn't know you would be here tonight.
I'm sorry.
No, and I'm, I'm glad you're here, you're, you're a resident, and this is important, as, as our county has over two hundred and twenty thousand people over age sixty-two, it's becoming the elephant in the room. But we, we have been supportive, I've seen yet a number of the Jersey Shore car shows, I've taken pictures with you, we made some Facebook posts. I was there at the, uh, event at Captain's Inn. So public health issues and items, that's one of my platforms up here, so I'm, I'm looking forward to supporting you. But, uh, I'm glad you invited our colleagues, but we have all been very, very supportive.
Oh, absolutely, my goodness.
Okay.
I couldn't even be more.
Mayor, you know what I was, I had spoken to her, um, at the car show, and I had mentioned to her, maybe we could put her in touch with Heather, and maybe Heather could invite her to one of the senior luncheons, you know.
That's a good idea, great idea.
Yeah, that's, I was thinking she'd be a great speaker for that, you know.
I have yourself.
Yeah, and also if you could, um, maybe give me information about going to the public schools in our town, and like speaking about this subject, but in a fun way, because this is, it's, it's a great book for like the young kids and the teenagers. And my son will probably go, he gra- all my kids graduated from here, okay, so, and he's in the book, so for him to like come and also talk to these people, make even the younger generation aware, because they're going through it too.
Yeah.
So, um, yeah, I thank you for giving me this opportunity, I really appreciate all of you. I love Lacey Township, and, you know, God bless all you, happy Thanksgiving.
Thank you.
Same to you.
Put you in touch with Heather, thank you.
Yes.
Other comments this evening? Seeing none, making moves. Oh, okay, Rich, Mr. Bitnick, welcome. I'm sorry.
Much different.
I'm Regina.
No, I don't.
Am I jacket?
Okay, um, good evening, Lacey citizens and members of the Township Committee. I'm stating this as the Chair of the Lacey Citizens for Responsible Government, to start off my comments tonight. One of our, if you read at our charter, it's basically about transparency, honesty, and accountability, and fiscal responsibility of our elected officials. And I want to make comment to something that happened at the last meeting, and I'm, this isn't personal, okay, this is business. I'm just saying this, so I don't want people to get mad at me and thinking I'm personally targeting you. But Mrs. Juliano, you cut off a person who is a taxpayer in this town, and a former elected official, actually, about a very legitimate complaint that she had. And I like to remind politicians that there are consequences for your actions. And this is the opportunity where a member of the public can call you out for the actions that they feel that you have done. I'm not going to get in the middle of a squabble, because it's none of my business, I mean, we have to hear about it here. I'm just saying, I don't appreciate, I'm fighting for people to have a voice, and we're cutting back people's ability to even be able to speak, and that is very authoritarian, I'm, I'm just telling you, it's just terrible. And on top of that, I have a message also for our board president, Mrs. Claus. You targeted me for lifting the school's logo to promote the candidates forum, but you did not target the candidates who also lifted part of the logo for their campaign material. You literally spent public tax dollars, having one of the school's attorneys not only researched this topic, since I have the legal bills, but you had the lawyer send me three threatening letters. You also acted alone, without board approval, and spent tax money going after one of your opponents. This is exactly what another former board president did when he went after Regina, Gavin, and Sonia.
Mr. Bitnick, can I ask you, I'm not going to cut you, I just need to ask you one question. You're reading a letter to Ms. Claus.
Yes, and she watches, she watches these meetings.
But she's not here, but M- M- Mr. Bitnick, it's almost like you're going to an apple orchard, and you're looking for fresh squeezed orange juice.
I want everybody in this town to know what is going on, okay? And that is my right to speak and say what I have on my mind. It's about political business in this town.
Continue.
This government body gave that school a million dollars, so you don't have any right to cut me off, because I have qualms with what's going on over there.
Please continue.
Okay, thank you. This is exactly what another former board president did when he, when he went after Regina, Gavin, and Sonia. The Supreme Court recently ruled on this case concerning breaking ethics, rules, and obligations censoring this former board president. What is even more galling is you can't even claim that you, you did not know that you could not do this, because when you were running for public office, you wrote on social media, from her campaign page, okay? Board members cannot act alone for any reason. I will do my part and encourage all BOE members to act and govern as one and as a team. I'm looking forward to doing this with the Lacey District. She can't even follow her own comments, yet she goes after people who are just speaking out about the issues. And she also posted, did you know the board has to adhere to a code of ethics? This is absolutely appalling. Obviously, she feels that the laws don't apply to her, like many politicians in our country today. But I got news for you, Ms. Claus, they do apply to you. I hope for your sake that you will never even consider running for any public office in this town. You are the most fiscally irresponsible government leader we currently have. You don't feel the laws apply to you, and I must say this, what a wonderful example you have set for all of our young people in our town by your actions. Absolutely disgraceful. Another note, I was able to visit the Charles A. Smith Memorial Hall, the original one. Um, well, we had the inspection at the end of October. And one of the things that I noticed was, if you just replaced the windows and stained the floors and the walls, you would have saved a lot of money by, instead of having to buy another building and then put money into that. And that building does have historical significance for a lot of people in this town. I mean, if you read the posts all over social media with this, you'll know how a lot of people are very unhappy with it. I'm unhappy with it, and I guess it's going to be appealed, the court case, and we'll probably take it all the way to the Supreme Court if we have to. On a final note, to the citizens of Lacey Township, I wish you all a truly happy Thanksgiving. Let us not forget to be thankful for our friends, our families, and the special people in our lives, and to tell them how much we appreciate and love them. God bless, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Yes, sir.
Tony, it was all the sunrise beach, we're talking about historical events. We don't have a Forkett River gang farm anymore to raise pheasants. We don't have a nuclear power plant any longer, yet our logo, and a couple of years ago, we were talking about changing the logo.
Yes.
I thought at one time.
There was some discussion about that.
Wasn't?
Yeah.
There was discussion, and, uh, I was just wondering, is it now, maybe it's the time, if we're talking about historic's, and we're talking about who we are, where we came from, where we're going? Maybe it's time for us to get, maybe the kids involved, because they're our future.
That's how it happened.
And get some kind of a contest maybe going.
That's how it happened the first time.
You know, we tried, didn't work.
That's what it was, right there, that one.
That one, yeah, but it's.
Well, Tony, you got to remember, hopefully, hopefully, the four modular reactors are going to go, we're going to go back in.
Hopefully. We're not raising pheasants, but juvenile delinquents anymore.
We raise geese.
Plenty of geese.
We've got geese all over the place now.
That's right, maybe we can come up with something else.
Each Canadian tourist should bring a Canadian goose back with them.
Yeah, well, I believe, well, we're bringing in a Canadian company, right? For White, where White Castle is, Tim Hortons, a Canadian, a Canadian company, you're letting them come in and take our US dollars back to Canada, okay? The, so, you know, the geese have a right too, I guess, as long as Tim Horton can come. But I was just saying that maybe we should, somewhere down the road, especially if we're going to do something with the YMCA or the YWCA, maybe we can tie something in with that.
A long way from it.
Even further down the road than we do right now, to get something updated for our historical legacy. Thank you very much.
Happy Thanksgiving.
Happy Thanksgiving, I hope everybody attacks the bird.
Any other comments this evening? Seeing none, motion to close the floor?
Aye.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'll do a resolution. Resolution twenty twenty-five dash three twenty-three, resolution of the Township of Lacey County of Ocean State of New Jersey, authorizing the convening of an executive session in accordance with the Open Public Meetings Act, discuss personnel matters.
Second.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Kenneth?
Yes.
Mrs. Juliana?
Yes.
Mr. Larray?
Yes.
Mayor Kurtola?
Yes.
Motion to adjourn?
Move it.
Second.
Aye, no further business.
Yeah, we say that all the time.